Good evening, everyone. It is time to start. I'm requesting order to my left, please. So it is Monday, September 11, 2017 at 5:00 P. M. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order, please, and I would request roll call.
Grenier?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Bradhauer?
Here.
Bollig?
Yes.
Buttrick?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public appearance. Item A, discussion of Jim Mann, Village Finance Advisor, in review of revised 2018-2023 Capital Improvement Plan and possible board direction. We have a note from the Village Administrator that he anticipates us approving the 2018-2023 CIP at the November 20th meeting when the board adopts the 2018 budget. So, Jim, come to the table, please, and welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
Just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are. The staff went back and redid the capital improvement plan, pulling some projects out, delaying some projects, trying to bring the overall cost of the plan down. And what you have before you is that revised plan. We did, in the process of getting all this information, get new equalized value numbers out for 2017, as well as the net new construction numbers. So right now, we're using for growth factors, a rolling average of 2.73%. That's what the Village has been experiencing over the last several years as an average. We're also looking at property appreciation of 1%, and that we're using on an average home price of $275,000, so we can calculate what the impact of the capital plan is to the average homeowner. Our interest rates, again, are based upon our earlier 2017 sale index for what we anticipate is a return to higher interest rates, which would be not necessarily be outside of normal, but higher than what they are today. We did break out some additional capital items and change some of the amortizations for some of the projects that were included in the capital plan. We added a category primarily for computer equipment. They were kind of lumped in with the five and the 10-year equipment purchases, and we felt that it would be better to amortize those over not greater than about a three-year period, because that's pretty much the life cycle of a piece of computer equipment. Then we have our basic equipment. Depending on the type of piece it is, somewhere between five and 10 years. General Street improvements, we're keeping at a 10-year. Facilities and major street reconstruction projects are at 20-year. And then we did continue to run the option of a 40-year USDA loan for the library over a much longer period of time with the other amortizations. So you have, basically, we tried to boil this down as simply as we could get it. And if you look at the chart on the bottom of the page, we've got the Option 1 financing package, which is financing the library over 20 years, and the Option 2 financing package, which is looking at the library over 40-year period. Basically, when you look at what the cost is to the average homeowner, Option 1 has a cost through the planning cycle, which takes us through 2025, of $307. The cost for the Option 2 plan, which is the 40-year option for the library, is $270. So really, it's about a $37 difference between the two options. Now, you might say, that doesn't seem to be a lot, but that's a, you know, that becomes a much longer period of time when you look at the library. In fact, over the course, although you're paying less in the short term, with a 40-year library paying interest over a 40-year period, you're going to pay a lot more interest over the time. And, you know, when you look at the next page, which is-
Jim, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
It relates to your assumptions of property appreciation?
Correct.
Is there any kind of a model that can help the residents get a sense of what the return on their investment's going to be for the library? Will that, will that have an impact on?
I wish I could tell you that we had something that we could plug in and say, alright, you're going to spend $8 million. It's going to cause this much economic development, because people are going to want to move to the village. I really don't have anything that, that would be anything other than me throwing a dart at a board.
Thanks.
Yeah.
As long as we've taken a break for questions, Jim, can I ask one or two?
Absolutely.
On the library and the 40-year amortization, our current library is in need of updating.
Yes.
And it's too small. You know, I won't get on all the reasons why we're building a new library or anticipate doing it, but how realistic is a 40-year amortization when the current one is basically not even 20?
Yes, the answer to that question is whether you're building it for an extended period of time or not. I mean, and how you're going to build the library, is it going to be a structure that can't be expanded or can it be expanded? So those are a couple of the questions. As you start looking at whether a 40-year financing would make sense versus a 20-year financing, you're going to want to have some idea whether you could add another wing onto the library realistically or not. Is that structure going to be adequate for up to a 40-year period? We have, and I've talked with Mike and Lisa about this. We see this all the time with municipalities getting talked into doing a 40-year financing for a wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater treatment plants, when they're licensed by the Department of Natural Resources, have a 20-year life cycle. And so you have built in that you're going to be updating or expanding your wastewater treatment plant at 20 years while you're still paying for the original structure. I mean, it's a, it's a very valid question. It's a very valid concern that I turn around and ask a couple of questions. On top of that, in terms of whether the plan for the expansion of the library is going to be sufficient for a greater period of time, and that's one of the answers that you're going to look for before you're going to say, 40 years makes sense.
Okay, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm not interpreting what you're telling me correctly, is that if we're going to do 40-year amortization, we should make sure there's expandability?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Jim, I have a follow-up question, if it's okay, Jerry?
Go ahead.
What, looking at, and I'm kind of jumping ahead, and I apologize, but I was looking at your, your graph that showed the debt over time with regards to the statutory debt limit and the trend line.
Yep.
Looking at that graph, what do you think is the likelihood that the Village would be refinancing this library debt before the maturity of the loan? You know, as debt falls off and capacity's there?
I, I think, given the right interest rate market, I would say that there's a better chance than not that at some point you would, and USDA calls it graduating to commercial rate finance, but you would graduate to another loan and you would probably shorten it up. We have been involved with a number of municipalities that have taken out 40-year loans for wastewater treatment plants, and we end up typically someplace, you know, 10 to 15 years out, refinancing them and shortening up their lifespan of the loan, going to, you know, a 30 or 35-year structure rather than the full 40 years. It's very attractive to have a lower payment, lower payment upfront for a lot of municipalities. Doesn't mean it's right, doesn't mean it's wrong, but a lot of times, the market rate that you'll have through USDA, at some point, you're going to get to a low-interest rate market, and it's going to make sense to either just do a straight refinancing and leave it at a longer period of time or shorten it up. Typically, though, we see them shortened up.
Thanks.
What are the costs involved with that process?
It's, they're almost the same as doing a commercial financing. The costs are probably more from an administrative standpoint, because the administrative rules for filing for and undertaking a USDA loan, there's a lot of paperwork and there's a lot of meetings. So it's staff time that is going to be a difference in terms of what the cost is.
Okay. Final question on the library. In your experience, or do you have any experience in using 40-year amortizations for libraries?
No.
Okay, so this is new territory for you, too?
This would be new territory for me. It's relatively new for the 40-year financing to be used for municipal facilities. There's a few communities that have been out there and done it. The majority of the time, the 40-year financing is used for utility structures.
Okay, great. And I have a quick one for Jeff. Jeff, on a 10-year amortization for streets, how often do we go 10 years on a street without doing something to it? In other words, chip sealing or crack maintenance?
I'd say we're probably, we're probably a little bit beyond 10 years. I'd say 10, 15.
So we can get 15 on a cell phone?
It depends. I mean, you know, yeah.
Okay, again, I just wanted to make sure that our amortizations were realistic before we go too much further. Thanks.
And I would, I would say that they probably are in the realistic realm. When you think about a major reconstruction of a road and you advertise that over 20 years, you're not going to make 20 years before you've gotten in and had to crack seal or do some, do some minor. But the majority of the structure of the road is still in a position where you're not doing major reconstruction. When you start looking at doing mill and overlays, you're probably down to about a 10-year life cycle on those. Sometimes, depending on traffic volume, you're going to go a little longer, sometimes less. But again, part of that has to do with how good the road base, what it's sitting on.
Okay.
But 10 years is a fairly good norm out there for doing your basic road maintenance, not necessarily a complete reconstruction of a roadway.
In the same way with a roof on a library, it's not going to last 40 years.
Correct. And, and this is a conversation that Mike, Lisa, and I had as well, is that if you were going to go down the road of utilizing USDA financing and look at 40 years, you may want to break that financing out a bit and pull some of the equipment, maybe the roof, out and amortize that over a 20-year period, as opposed to the walls. The walls are still going to be there 40 years. But you're going to have had to go into that library and replace carpet, fixtures. You know, there's a lot that's going to have to be replaced within there. So it may, it's not just as simple as saying, let's do it all at 40 years.
Okay.
But you'd have to look at what that mix would be.
At some point, I would be comfortable doing that process, because I, I think it'd be more realistic to take certain items out and amortize them over a much shorter period. That's just my thinking initially.
You know, in fact, this reminds me of a conversation that we were having with, it doesn't remind me of his name. Mike Slavney, yeah. And Mike said that, you know, when you look to build municipal buildings, what you're looking to do is build an 80-year exterior with a 20-year interior, because it's not even just the usable parts of the library, like the roof, that are going to wear over time, but it's the use of the space that's going to change over time. You're going to be configuring the library as the Village grows, and you're going to be expanding the library as the Village grows. But, but what you were saying about the walls, you know, those will be there 100 years from now.
Yeah, technology's going to change. 30 years ago, you didn't really have computers in libraries. I mean, so I mean, there was a, there's a big change that shifted even in the last 20 years in terms of the way libraries are constructed. 20 years from now, they're going to be very different.
And maybe you can help me, too, because I'm learning as I go here, but, or maybe even somebody else here in the room, but the inside of the library, my recollection is that belongs to the library and the foundation, and that we just approved the operational budget?
The, the library owns the, well, I mean, right now, the way we're going to decide that is we go through the MOU process. That's all going to be decided, but typically, the library will own the, the property and the building.
But, so once the building is built, who's responsible for the maintenance of the inside of the library and for any kind of modifications or improvements to the inside of the library?
The Library Board will ask the Village Board on an annual basis for their capital improvements, like they're doing now. And then the Village Board makes a decision on, but once the Village Board gives the money on an annual basis to the Library Board, the Library Board can do whatever it wants with that money on an annual basis. They haven't done that, but, but they could technically do that, legally do that.
Okay, continuing on. So we have, through the, through the planning period, difference between the two options is about $37. When you look at planning it all the way out, now remember that our, our capital plan only goes through 2024 in terms of debt issues. So anything after that, we start advertising, you would expect to see a drop. But just based upon the capital plan, if you look at the overall cost to that average homeowner, the difference between, between the two is about, you know, $400, $400 over the course of those 40 years. But when you look at the overall cost in terms of the levy for debt purposes, it's about $4 million that gets spread about, well, actually, $5 million that gets spread out over the taxpayers of the community. So you're paying a lot more in interest. You're paying the same amount of principal with these two plans, but you're adding about $5 million worth of principal going to the 40-year financing to have an upfront lower cost.
You're adding $5 million worth of interest?
Pure interest.
Right.
That's pure interest.
If you go the full 40 years?
If you go the full 40 years. And it's impossible for us to really model when you do a refunding and what the rate would be. So we have to look at it from this perspective. But the likelihood is that you're out there at some point doing some refunding and achieving some cost savings. So that's the nuts and the bolts. The rest of the pages really are just support of, of the overall conclusions. And I don't, I don't know if you have any further questions or you want some additional detail. I'll try to give you some color.
Could you define the term impact on the previous page? I'm looking for information that would most be, would, tell us the most about the impact on the homeowner.
The most on the impact of the homeowner is that this capital plan, with all the components included, including the existing debt. So for debt, including the capital plan through 2024 issues, in Option 1, will cost the average homeowner over the 20, basically through 2044, 88.15 on Option 1, and 92.51 on Option 2 through 2061. So there's a $400 difference. They're going to pay less upfront, but they're going to pay much, much more on the long end
Right.
in Option 2.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Jim, maybe we should go back and look at the chart we asked you to do on your, your cover memo?
Yeah.
Because this is what Lisa did the last time you were here. So what, what, and let's maybe just use Option 1 as a, as a, versus doing the comparison at this point. So basically, what Jim did was, Jim is saying, you've got the debt service, and you see that it says operations at the top. So that, that's basically what we told Jim to use, $75, $60. So that's a dollar amount. So that's what we're saying. So you can take the, the debt service levy impact and the operational and get the, the annual change. And that's what, that's what Jim did. Because I think the first time we looked at this, months ago, the Board was only looking at debt service, and you have to look at, at the operational levy as well for a total levy impact.
Yeah. Can I ask why you make an assumption that the operations would be exactly the same? As opposed to going up 3%, 4% a year, cost of living increases and things of that nature?
That's an annual increase. That's a compounding increase. So it's $75 in the first year, $60 the second year, $60 a year after that.
So it's 75, then it's 130, then it's 190, then it's-
And, and you have to remember that you're, you know, the reason why you don't see a huge change in this is because your existing debt is falling off.
And that's why, that's why I attached the, the sheet that we did, or my presentation to the Board. This is a long spreadsheet, because we're, again, we're trying to match the existing debts that's, that's falling off. But I think the other thing I wanted to have you look at, I mean, it's looking at, again, maybe turning back to this page here is, so then you, you know, you look at, you look at the increase percentage-wise, you look at the total increase, but then you just have to look at this, the raw numbers that, you know, your annual cost, for example, in 17, on an average house, is $317. And, actually, maybe it's better looking at this page here. I think Jim highlights-
Well, even if you look at the front page,
I know.
The, the number that you're getting to, your, your total in 2017
True.
for existing, existing debt was $317. Implementing this capital plan with the operational increases at the end of 2025, when this plan would be complete, you are adding $307 to the tax roll, to the taxes of that $275,000 homeowner, and they'll be paying $624 for these items.
And, and so I think, Lisa, I think in, for 17, in the 17 budget, we're using, I think it was $257 in average house. It went up quite a bit
Right.
for 18. And so when you look out, you know, we're going to end up having, I'm sure we're going to have a recession at some point, so the, the values will, but at this point, we're just, we're increasing it, you know, pretty gently, I guess, every year.
Yeah.
But I, I want, you know, sometimes what gets lost on this, people will talk about percentages. I just like looking at the actual dollar amount that's going to go up and that, and the impact on Village residents, so. And Jim made a good point the other day, we were talking that if we, if we keep on this schedule to build a library, when we're proposing to build it, next year at this time, we'd have to be making, the Board would have to be making a decision about what type of loan to take out, right?
Well, we, we have to have a general idea of the direction you're going to go and whether you're actually going to do it when you say you're going to do it. Because one of the things that I did with the amortizations of the debt issues between now and when you're actually going to construct the library, is there's some principal payments that are kind of pushed up into the front, so that I can gently build into what your maximum levy's going to be after you take the hit for building the library. It's hard to build that big of a, a capital asset without it having an impact. And so we've taken the 18 issue, the 19 issue, and started to build into expecting that we're going to have this large increase when we do the library borrow. And so we've built into that. And if you're not going to build the library, then we don't necessarily want to leave the amortization schedules of those other years at the same level that they're going to be at. We're just trying to build in knowing what's out there on the horizon, so that there isn't that shocker of a year where you're going up 300 bucks.
Yeah. So we have time yet, but I just wanted to point that out.
So if I remember correctly, we have the second lowest tax rate in Dane County?
I have that. I think it was-
I think it's the third.
Something like that.
Municipal.
Something like that, like five.
Municipal portion.
Yeah, I think your rights is somewhere in there, yeah.
So can you predict how this will impact that?
You know, over the course of time, it'll increase it, but typically, what happens is there's a leapfrogging of municipal rates. That, you know, you've got to build a municipal facility that's going to have a big impact today. Somebody else is going to have to build one next year or the year after that. It's going to, so you get this constant shuffling. The goal is not to go from lowest to highest and stay there.
Yeah.
And, you know, you, you know, you know, it sounds horrible that you want to strive to be average, but bottom line is, you want to strive to be slightly below average in terms of what the cost is. That's where you want to be positioned.
I've been doing that my whole life.
That's why we all have day jobs. But you might, you know, you want to be on the lower end of the scale. You don't want to be on the higher end of the scale, because then your residents are looking at you and saying, we have, our taxes are too high. And then typically, what happens is you have a cycle where you stop spending money so that you can bring the taxes down, and then you get behind on your capital improvements, and then you start the process all over again. And that's the tumbling that goes on, on those, on those charts. Bottom line is, you have to look at your taxes from the perspective of what needs to be done to keep, keep the Village running, what needs to be done to keep the residents happy, and somewhat the chips fall where they fall after that. And if the residents are happy with the level of services that you're providing, and you've climbed up a couple of notches, they're happy with the level of services that you're providing. I mean, I anticipate that there's enough, there's been enough discussion on the fact that you need to build a library, that people aren't going to be surprised when you build a library, and that they're going to know that that's going to have been coming down the pike, and there's a cost to that. I guarantee you, they should know it, but they'll be shocked. But that's why you try to build it in and do it as smoothly as you possibly can with some planning.
Can I go back to the operations question to kind of piggyback off?
Yeah.
Jeff had asked, so I got that it was compounding increase, but I also know if I did the calculations right, that the, that original $60 in 2025 is worth like negative 80. So can we see some modeling with like a 3% or 4%?
Well, I mean, that's just a, that's, that $60 is a, an increase on an annual basis to that, you know, the tax bill.
Right.
And-
It, there is, it isn't, we've never done it based on a percentage. We, I, I came up with that number, I, because we try to stay, we've tried to stay between like a 35 and a $60 annual increase for, for the levy. And so I came up with the number, you know, that'd be my goal, is to try to hold operations to that, that level of annual increase, because I know debt's going to be driving the levy up. So, so I came up with that number.
I'm just trying to accommodate for the time value of money as it, you know, as you project out to the future, the value of your money goes down. So, so although it compounds, it's, I'm probably not explaining this well, but-
It's, the difficulty with that calculation is you have to take into consideration then growth and development. Value increasing. And that's really what's offsetting most of those increases. And I, I mean, I can just speak from personal experience. My taxes where I live are less than what they were five years ago. And it's not because the Village has necessarily spent less money in the municipality, and they're keeping up and they're, and they're continuing to march forward. It's that there's been growth and development that's actually reduced my taxes. Added to that, the Village has, my Village has closed a couple of tax increment districts, which then puts money back into, or value back onto the tax roll, which then drives the tax rate down. So it's, it's very hard to do the model that you're talking about without really getting, it gets pretty detailed to try to look at it. And there's a lot of assumptions that go into it, and the more assumptions I have to put into it, the easier it is to poke a hole into it. And I, I would almost, I would almost say that it's easier to look at what Mike's done and says, we're trying to keep our annual increase to that homeowner's tax bill about $60, $35 to $60, rather than looking at a straight linear approach in terms of trying to apply the net new construction and time value of money, money to it. That concept gets very hard to, to project out into the future, especially when you start bringing in growth and development in terms of what's going to happen on that side of the equation.
Even for eight years?
Even for eight years. I mean, there's a couple of TIF districts that the Village has that is going to close in here. We haven't even included those in the numbers. That's the windfall years. That you, you know, basically, you end up using to catch up on something that you may have fallen behind on. That's what we tend to use those for.
Jim, I saw the, the really in-depth report that your firm did for the Village of Sherwood. It was, it was truly a five-year, or it was a financial impact, and I think that's what was, is probably what Jenna's getting at. You have to really go, every department, I think, probably gave you input about staffing and operational costs to come up with. And I think at the end, I think Sherwood said, we're going to spend so much per thousand, you know, like, like, like some, some communities have, say, we're not going to have more than a dollar something for debt service. And I, I think that Sherwood come up with some, some recommendation about operational and debt service. But that was a very involved, that's what Jim's saying.
We have a fairly detailed plan that we do for the City of Pittsburgh to your north.
Oh, right.
And that plan has a full-blown staffing plan built into it that the staffing plan, when, and we didn't create the staffing plan, and we've talked to the, the council several times about this, and they're aware that the numbers don't match up. But the projected population growth is nowhere near what the projected staffing growth is, which is nowhere near what the projected value growth is. The, the, the three numbers do not track in any sort of cogent manner. And so that, that becomes very difficult, and yet our, our operational plan includes these staffing increases, which make the projections for what the operational budget's going to look like almost seem insurmountable. almost seem insurmountable. But we have no other, no other source document to use other than what this staffing plan came up with, that they're gonna almost double their, you know, their, their, uh, employee population over a certain period of time. And so, and that's, that's where some of this gets so convoluted is one linear path goes one way and another linear path goes another direction, and they don't necessarily track in a, in a cohesive manner in terms of, if one is tracking at a certain rate, the others should track almost similarly, um, unless you're remarkably behind in staffing or you're ahead in staffing. So it, that's the difficulty we have in projecting too far out into the future. And, um, we get a little nervous putting too much stock into those projections. The short windows, we can look at pretty succinctly, it's the long windows that get very hard. I mean, it's even hard to look at what you've got included here for your, your, your capital plan when you look at, when you look at we've got four million dollars worth of debt. Uh, twenty, that's the year that we build the library, it's, it's, you know, nine million dollars worth of debt. Twenty-one, um, depending on, you know, there's, there's two-point-three million dollars worth of debt. Twenty-two, there's about four-point-six, and then twenty-three and twenty-four, or twenty-four, there's only a million dollars of debt out there in terms of the projects that are out there. We know that as we get closer to twenty-four, that's gonna backfill. And then there's, there's gonna be other projects that come in out there. And so that's gonna, that's gonna have an impact as well in terms of, as you get further out, those numbers fill in. And that's why, uh, the chart that I have in here shows the trend line. The way it is, it's basically tracking at, if you're on this trend, this trend shows that you're actually increasing your debt burden over time. Cause right now, you're less than, you know, a third, well, you're a quarter of your debt borrowing capacity. Um, the trend line would have you closer to fifty percent. Now, that's the trend line, including, you know, twelve million dollars worth of, or, yeah, twelve million dollars worth of buildings between the, the library and the community center. So that skews it to a certain extent. And again, that, you know, can model for it, but you figure over a ten or a twenty-year period, those projects do come around.
Jim, just one other comment, um, the one thing that we, and we, because we, we can't predict the future, obviously, but we know at some point in this plan, the village will also be doing additional TIF grants or TIF loans for development. And so, we don't have those in here, but we can't predict those.
The assumption with those, though, is that they are going to be paid for by
By the development.
An outside source.
Right.
That it's not going to be dollars that are gonna be levied on the general taxpaying population.
That's always the goal.
What Mike is saying is this is all subject to change. Right?
It, it will change, next year at this time, we'll be sitting here and this will all be, no, I should say all be different, but it'll, quite a bit will, will be different. Because as we talked about when I presented the, uh, the large spreadsheet is, you know, last year, we, or maybe a year and a half ago, we were not talking about doing those two sidewalk projects. Those, you know, some new projects come up. When Jeff and Gary, they do the Pacer program for the streets, they'll probably identify different streets that need to be addressed. It, it changes every year, but you, at least we have a plan and have some guidance, you know, going forward.
We've said this before, I, I brought it up and you've echoed it, but, you know, one thing that we can, that we can know is that there's timing, there's, there's cycles in terms of interest rates and costs of doing certain projects that go out over time, and they're somewhat, they're not predictable to the year, but they're somewhat predictable as you look back. You can see cycles of seven years and cycles of five years and things. And it's fair to say that, um, rates are about as low as they're going to be, they're not gonna go down, they're only gonna go up. And if we don't take advantage of this opportunity to make these large capital improvement plans, we probably have to be ready to buckle our seatbelts for seven, eight, or eight years.
So, so Jim, a question I have, uh, I mean, if we do this, the library project, it has a, uh, pretty big impact on our other departments. How do municipalities navigate their way through that?
Uh, in terms of.
Kind of a loaded question, I know.
In terms of using.
We have staffing that's needed in the police department, public works, and probably the senior center and, and so on, and the office upstairs, we don't have positions filled because, even right now. And that's a, that's a concern I have because we have more than just one department, we have five departments.
Right, and that's the, that's the juggling act that every municipality deals with. And that's kind of the averaging impact, is that if you had all those positions filled and you had your staffing at the, the way it, it, it probably, or what you're saying it should be perhaps, you wouldn't be the third lowest. You'd be
Right.
in the middle of the pack.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's kind of the rolling that ends up happening as peo, as communities catch up and get to where they need to be, their levies and their tax burden rises. And then somebody else has been frugal, and then they catch up. And that's how that just basically turns over, and again, that's the striving to be average. You know, not, you don't necessarily wanna go to the high end of the spectrum. Because once you go to the high end of the spectrum, you will see some stifling of growth and development. There is an impact in terms of when people see that your taxes are higher than the average taxes in the, in the region, you may see some stifling. Now, if the reason that those taxes are higher is because you've just built a new facility, but yet your operational side is still low, there aren't that many people that go into those numbers as much as I would go into those numbers, but some do. And they're gonna say, well, that's because we have all these new facilities. Um, I, I think you'll, when, when school districts talk about referenda, um, and they talk about selling it to the community, they talk about how the investment will actually benefit growth and development. And there's some truth to that because if your, you know, your school facilities are subpar compared to neighboring communities, people are gonna wanna send their kids to those neighboring community schools because they have all the bells and whistles. And so there's, there, there's, there's an impact there, and, and I think the same could be said for some of the recreational leisure type activities, libraries, parks. But they're also gonna look at it from a road perspective. If the roads aren't very good, people aren't gonna wanna be here. If the services are next to nothing, if, you know, I have to pay a monthly charge to get my garbage collector or something like that, those, you know, people think that that should be part of their tax bill. And so they kind of roll that all up into one. So, I, I, you know, I think when it comes to dealing with the other departments, you've gotta, you know, the, you've gotta run the village the way the village needs to be run, and there's gonna be cost to that. There's a level of services that your citizens want or that you've set up, and if they're not willing to pay for those services, they have to be willing to cut some of those services. And that's always one of the hardest discussions to have is, yes, I know you don't wanna pay any more taxes, but tell me what we should be cutting out of our services. What can we live without? And the biggest problem from a municipal side is you'll have one person say X, you'll have another person say Y, and then somebody else says something else completely. And I use the library, somebody else doesn't use the library. I go to the parks all the time, somebody else doesn't go to the parks all the time. So you have a very divergent base that you gotta provide the services for. Unlike schools, what do they, they, they have to educate kids K through twelve. It's very focused, you have to plow the roads, you have to do public safety, you have to provide the leisure and recreational activities, and then you gotta have administration staff to oversee it all.
Yeah, once, once residents have a service, if you try and take it away, that can be a real challenge.
They don't much like giving it up.
Like, like mowing.
Yeah.
Certain areas. And that can apply to lots of services, we have leaf collection, brush collection.
Yeah.
All sorts of things that would be not good, so. It's hard to cut that back. But, uh, you know, a concern I have going forward, uh, and we clearly need a new library, but we have five departments, and I want one to be real happy and four to be not happy. So that's the juggling game that the seven of us have to play, how we make that work in my mind.
And, and typically, if you're gonna go into building something like the library, that's a capital cost, but if there are operational impacts beyond that, you know, you're adding those on top of the capital cost. There's gonna be a, uh, I don't wanna say a drought, it's the, you know, the only word that comes to mind at the moment, but there's gonna be less of a chance that you're gonna wanna increase the other departments in that short window.
So one of the thoughts that comes to my mind is, is we have been, in the three years I've been here, we have kind of gone through the departments, you know, there's, there's been years when the library didn't get the investment from the village, but Public Works got it. There's been years where the fire department didn't get the investment from the village, but Public Works got it, or the, or the, or the police department got it. So even in just three short years, I've seen that ripple through. Um, you've got a lot more experience in village administration than that. How have you managed this in the past? Cause these are your reports, these are your departments.
I always, you know, I will tell department heads that sometimes if they have a good year or two, then now they're gonna have less of a couple of good years so that if we can give money to other departments. You can't give everybody everything they want every year. So it comes down to decisions and, you know, what, like, for example, we, Brian needed to change his record management system, so that was an easy one. We didn't, we wanted to get body cameras for the police department. But you, when you see Brian's request for eighteen, it's very, it, it matches the cap improvement plan. So I mean, that's, that's what happens, you go through cycles where somebody gets maybe a little bit more money than other people, and then you pull back for a couple of years to balance the budget.
And then your department heads just sort of, they, they sync up with you and they just sort of plan that way.
Well, and they have to have a trust in the board that if they have a couple maybe lesser years, that they know that something's gonna happen in the future, and that has been the case with this board in particular, so.
I'm, I'm not sure, though, Jeff, we've rolled through as far as staffing.
Well, I've only been here three years.
What?
I've only been here three years.
Yeah, I know, I've been here longer than that.
You're right.
Public Works got their last new employee, what, ninety-seven or something like that? We just added a police officer, but we're still down significantly for what's recommended, and.
Well, we talked about the salaries study.
Yeah.
And we talked about truing up salaries, we, we, we're still talking about it. It hasn't happened.
Yeah, we're talking, and we're going forward with lots, lots of new stuff, so. That's something we've gotta figure out, and we're gonna make that work, and keep the village functioning on all cylinders. As far as I'm concerned.
But, but Jim makes a really good point that, um, when the, whenever the library is built, it, it is going to, even though, to Nikki's credit, we are going through, we're calling a step plan.
Yeah.
But even when that library is built, you're gonna have operations that will, will increase. I mean, it's gonna be a lot bigger building, and that is gonna affect how the other departments are funded. You just have to accept the fact that for a couple of years, the library is gonna get more of the levy for operations until things level out. So then you just hold back on other expenditures for a couple of years if you can.
Anything else, Jim, are you, any more questions that we have? Pretty quiet over there. A little questions later, so, yeah, yeah, and this goes back to us, uh, through the budget process with decisions, uh, at the November twentieth meeting.
That's correct.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You've been helpful.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, so that takes us to item four, village attorney report. Welcome, Matt.
Hi. Hello.
So, uh, item A is discuss some possible action regarding agreement to undertake development in Oregon Parks Neighborhood Edition, and the rest of my motions to approve the development agreement, so.
I'll move that motion for question.
One second.
Thank you.
We've got a handout here, which is a one-page summary of a fifty-page agreement.
So why'd you read the whole thing?
Should've sent the summary out on Friday, right?
Matt, have you reviewed the whole agreement?
Yes.
And you're okay with it as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but did you wanna give a little background, just historical, I, cause this is, this one's been around for a while.
Keel, do you wanna, this is, uh,
Yeah, sure.
One of the developers. And I think this, I think this property was annexed in two thousand seven, eight somewhere.
Seven or two thousand eight, yeah.
Or somewhere in there, and so it was right at the beginning of the recession. And so it's, it sat for a while, obviously, during the recession, and that's, that's why it's, this has taken some time. And, um, we spent some time also working with, uh, with Keel and his, and his family, uh, because we're trying to preserve the trees on the property. This is actually the first wooded subdivision that we have going for us after we adopted the new zoning code in, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, which requires a tree preservation. So that, that took some time, uh, going through that process. And, but I think it was mainly the, the, the poor economy that really delayed the, the billing of the subdivision. And so I think we are finally here to approve the agreement. And you, as you can see, as you drive up North Alpine Parkway, they are already starting to grade and, and put the utilities in, so it's good news.
Yeah, it looks a lot different already.
Yeah, it sure does.
Yep. Um, I'd like to just take a few minutes to summarize kind of the, well, the highlights of the development agreement. And, um, you know, I don't think this board has approved a development agreement for a plat for a while. Maybe since, maybe not before the, maybe before the rest, recession was the last actual development agreement we approved for a subdivision plat. So this is an opportunity to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what, what do we see in, in an agreement like this? Uh, the plan itself that has, that will be recorded was approved by the board on June, in June, uh, this year. But it can't be recorded until this agreement is signed. So what do we do with, uh, with a development agreement like this? Um, first, the agreement requires the developer to construct the public improvements that are needed to serve these new lots, uh, where people are gonna build homes. And basically what we're talking about is sanitary sewer, infrastructure, water infrastructure, storm sewer, and stormwater management facilities, streets. Here we have a public street and two private drives. And, uh, utility infrastructure, gas and electric, telephone, sidewalks, street signs, bike paths, street lamps, all that stuff. Um, so the developer is required to construct all of those public improvements and to guarantee those improvements against defects for one year after they've been accepted by the village. And the installation of those public improvements and the, and the one-year guarantee obligation are both, uh, required to be secured by a letter of credit that, um, the developer's, uh, lender will need to provide to the village. And we have a draft letter of credit, we have a letter of credit from their, from their lender. There are also a number of fees that the developer was required to pay in this case. Many of these fees were actually paid pretty earlier when the annexation agreement was approved. So in summary, uh, park fees, initially the developer paid sixty thousand dollars to the village in park fees based on an estimate at the time that there would be eighty units in the plat. Um, we now know that there are going to be fifty-four units, so this agreement provides that the village will refund nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to the developer. So we'll end up with net park fees of forty thousand five hundred dollars. Um, there's a stormwater fee of seventeen thousand one hundred and four dollars. Uh, West Side sanitary sewer interceptor fee of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and one dollars. Fees for North Alpine Parkway, Netherwood, and Bike Trail, these are all fees, dollars that the village has been collecting at the time of annexation and holding so that when it comes time, for example, to upgrade Netherwood Road, there will be some funds available to do that. Uh, Lot one twenty-five, there's an existing residence on that, uh, property, so there'll be a sewer connection fee of forty-three hundred dollars. As I recall, most of these fees were, have already been paid by the developer. We are requiring the developer to install sewer and water infrastructure that's actually sized larger than what's necessary to just serve this plat. This plat could be served by an eight-inch water and an eight-inch sewer, but in order to plan for the future, the village is requiring twelve-inch water and sewer mains. And the, the agreement provides that the village will reimburse the developer for, and the, basically what we've agreed is the incremental increase in the cost of putting in the, the upsized pipes. And that's something that the village's engineer has helped us calculate.
And, and we did something similar in Bergamot. The, the Bergamot developers took a, for example, the sewer pipe and ran it all the way to Lincoln Road, and we, the village paid for oversizing it, but at some point, way in the future, it may go under Lincoln Road to serve a subdivision on the south side of Lincoln Road.
And then finally, uh, as Mike said, we have a preservation, tree preservation requirements now in the zoning code. Uh, I think it's seventy percent of the existing quality trees, and, and that's, we spent a lot of time on that here, I think the developer had to pay for a survey to be done, and, and that thing's been worked on quite a lot over the last ten years. Uh, there will be covenants that will be recorded that will notify all of the property owners who buy lots in that development, uh, the number of these trees that they're required to maintain on their property, and if a tree is lost, uh, they'll have to replace it. Um, and that's all addressed in the tree preservation covenants that are. And that's all addressed in the tree preservation covenants that are attached as exhibit A to the agreement. So, that's a summary of what the development agreement provides for. If this agreement is approved, it'll be signed, we'll, we'll send a final draft to the developer. Kyle, we made like one small, we caught a couple of little mistakes today, just so we corrected those. We'll send the final draft to you and get it signed by the developer, back to the village. The village will sign it, we'll get the letter of credit completed. The plat, once those are all signed, we can sign the plat, that can be recorded. And I think from a, from a zoning and land division and development agreement standpoint, this development will be done and now, and it'll just be the developer's project to move forward with. So, that's it. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. So, we have the motion and second to approve the development agreement for Oregon Parks Neighborhood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How easy was that?
Bogs the next step.
Go move some dirt.
I have a quick question, Kyle, and I'm sure we've covered this in past board meetings, but I just can't recall. Is there development going in along Alpine Parkway as well? Are, are those going to be housing at all, or is that ultimately going to be restored to field? Alpine West up to the tree line?
What's going to be?
The duplex.
Like a continuation of the roll houses, or is it going to be a different structure?
Yes, if we're talking about the same section, which is the former alfalfa field.
Right.
Right, those are, essentially, the duplex lots go in that section where that particular field is. And then there's a fairly significant stormwater detention area on the Netherwood end of that as well.
Where they're digging?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, there's nothing in this, in this plat that you have now that is like, that's on the Oregon Parks Townhomes Plan, like what you see on the corner of Oregon Parks and Alpine Parkway there.
What, can you say that again?
There's nothing in that development that they're proposing, that they're working on that is similar to what is being done at the corner of Oregon Parks and Alpine Parkway.
Oh, so, so the duplexes that you're putting in are going to be different, different structures?
Just, they're duplexes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, small, smaller.
Not eight-unit buildings or anything like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Good night.
Going to item four B, discussion of possible action regarding Town and Country Engineering Master Agreement. The recommended motion is to approve the agreement with Town and Country.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
My memo here just kind of summarizes kind of what, what is happening here. This is really not committing us to anything. It's just the legal document that kind of allows us to be able to get services on a task order basis. Covers all the legal jargon, if you will, in, in this. And very similar to what we have with Rookirk Milky, Strand Associates and other, MSA and other outfits that we have do work for us.
Is this agreement something that Matt has to review or should review?
Yes, it's, he's reviewed this.
Okay. And you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, see none, we have the agreement to approve with Town and Country, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item C, discussion of lawsuit filed by Monumental Enterprises Incorporated slash Patrick Makavec. The village's insurance company attorney is answering the complaint on the village's behalf, so.
Yeah, this is the matter that the village has previously denied a notice of claim regarding this. The plaintiff has now filed a lawsuit we will vigorously defend.
Is, we have insurance, we have litigation insurance, right?
Tim, Tim Bozkowski from Stafford's offending the village, working on behalf of the insurance company.
Okay, so the taxpayers pay no costs for this, other than premium? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, item five, approval of minutes, there are none tonight. Item six, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight, the amount of two million, six hundred ninety thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty cents for approval.
I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
Item two zero four five, I may just not have been aware of this before, but we pay a jail assessment? Is that part of the annual budget then?
It's two zero four five, August jail assessment, five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty dollars, sorry.
Is that part of the municipal court collections that go for that?
Yeah, that's, the, the fees that are collected through the court process, it's broken down to multiple different areas. There's like our fee that we keep, there's the fee that we have to send to the state. If there's any restitution for like QuickTrip or something like that. And then this is what we pay to the county.
Out of that total?
Yeah, out of, out of the total that we collect per month, there's a report that's run and it breaks it down by the different, the different people we have to pay, pay out. First, based on the, the fee that's collected for whatever it is, the infraction is.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
Yes, thanks. Number twenty-four seventy-seven, Lisa, and this is probably a question for Nikki. You'll know, it's on the library. The exterior, exterior, exterior window repair, was that a, a new window or a damaged repair?
That was a damaged repair.
Okay, do we have insurance for something like that?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't damaged by somebody, it was damaged by a, an animal, a rat.
A rodent.
A rodent. It's the, it's the bay window on, on the park street, there's no insurance covered for it.
I sense a story here, though, I mean.
It, it was an extensive repair job, yeah.
Really?
Basically, a rodent took residents in, from the outside in a wall section and built a nest up there.
Really?
And it had to be removed. And in the process, it had to be kind of decontaminated in there and interior repairs as well as fix what was happening on the outside that was allowing that rodent to work its way inside.
Like a squirrel, something like that?
We did not see the perpetrator, although there is a, a pollster down at the police department on our most wanted animals list right now.
Okay, nobody, nobody knows if the library has a pet that's living in there.
We have not found the gerbil.
Jerry, Nikki wrote a really excellent internal memo to the library board that perhaps you should send to Jerry.
Just for kicks, okay.
It was like one of the best memos I had ever read.
I'd like to see it too, though.
Why pick on me?
It went to a lot of detail.
I mean, if it's better than Jeff's, it's really good.
It was all around, sounds great.
Okay, thank you. I guess. I have, wait a minute. Workers' bear insurance, workers' comp insurance, is that an annual premium? Twenty-six thousand dollars?
No, I think that's a quarterly payment, isn't it? I think that's a quarterly payment for workers' comp.
Okay. So, we pay a hundred thousand dollars a year for workers' comp insurance, huh?
Sounds about right.
Okay. Take your word for it.
That's expensive.
And I see we, we're reimbursing a sewer backup. How much money is left in that account, Lisa? About?
I don't know. How much did we approve?
We approved thirty thousand dollars. I think we figured we were at about twenty-two, still remaining.
Okay, so it's not gone yet.
Yeah, there's still a significant amount in there.
Okay, just wondering if it was all gone.
I don't think it.
Oh, no, I know that for sure.
Okay. Thank you, I'm done.
Next, Jerry, other questions? Okay, so we have vouchers tonight with the motion second to approve, the amount of two million, six hundred ninety thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty cents. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Breitner?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item seven is committee input, anybody who would like to address the board tonight? Welcome, Judy. You know the rules, right?
Yeah. Don't forget to introduce yourself.
Gary. I'm Judy Knudsen. I'm the executive director of the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce. I just want to take a moment to invite you all to come on September fourteenth. We're having a social gathering at the State Bank of Crest Plains for the chamber. And at that time, we are also going to be presenting the new marketing video for Oregon. So, we invite you to come and see it. I did send an email today, this morning, to all of you, if you haven't opened your village email yet. So, you, it should be there. But I think it's going to be a nice event. And also, we're going to be showing it the next board meeting also, which will be the eighteenth. Next Monday, we'll show it to, makes, was so nice to put it on the agenda. So, at this time, I really would like to thank Tim at the Oregon Cable Access, as well as the whole Oregon Cable Access. They all took a little part of it and, and took pictures and videos and all that other stuff. And Jeannie Carpenter came and gave me the, hey, yeah, let's do it, so, and she looked at some of it too. So, I think it's going to be a nice marketing video also for the police department to hire policemen, because we got a part in there for safe community and different things like that for the fire department as well. So, hopefully, it works out and everything looks great to you, so, thank you.
Did you tell us what time that is?
Um, it's from five to seven at State Bank of Crest Plains on this Thursday night. And for anybody that's going to the Planning Commission, we're going to show it at five fifteen so that you'll still make it to the Planning Commission. We don't want you to miss that.
Wonderful.
And then we'll show it again at six thirty, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Okay, item eight, proclamations and announcement. A, any board comments?
Yes, I have a comment. Today, we were over in Stoughton and all the flags are up. And I, Oregon didn't have their flags up for September eleventh, and I was kind of disappointed in that.
The Boy Scouts should do that.
The Boy Scouts were out last week. I saw them.
Yeah, they did it last night, but today is, today is the day, you know. And also, the Historical Society is having that, they just put out a pamphlet, or I shouldn't say, a book on years at, Oregon years, and I, I think that's twenty-five dollars if you purchase that. And, and next Sunday, I think that they're going to have a tour. I, I don't know all about that, but that sounds very interesting. I think the book will be from eighteen fifty to nineteen fifty, and with lots of pictures in it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Gary?
Yes, I'd like to commend staff, probably more specifically, Jeff, for staying on top of the, and whatever part of the staff stayed on that project. But we got the Jefferson Street Road Project done and open by school, right?
Open, open by school, yes.
Yeah, that was the goal. So, congrats.
Thank you.
Just to respond to Darlene's comment, there was a very nice, small temporary memorial put up in front of the EMS building. So, it consisted of a uniform and a farmer's hat, and there was a torch burning. So, I thought that was a nice commemoration of the, of nine eleven, too.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah.
Others? Okay, we'll go to staff comments, item B, Mike?
Just had the, the meetings listed. I think we are going to cancel the committee meetings on the twenty-fifth. I, I don't think we're going to need them, and we have a, a meeting that week anyways, on, on Wednesday, the joint meeting. So, we'll try to keep it to one, one meeting that week, so.
Okay, cross that one off.
Yep.
Any other staff comments right now?
I have one. The Senior Center has a licensed adult day program. It's licensed by the state of Wisconsin to have sixteen seniors there three mornings a week, which means with a state license comes a state inspection. And we are supposed to be inspected every two years, but the inspectors are busy, so they don't get there quite as often as they should. They came unannounced last, week before last, after not being there for seven years. And they did their inspection. I don't have the written report yet, but the email I got back from them was that the program had zero violations of state regulations. And I wanted to acknowledge the work that the Senior Center staff did, but also the staff at the Village Hall that really helped us on the day when he was there and wanted these records and those records, and what training have your people had in this and that and the other thing. And the staff at the Village Hall was very helpful in tracking things down, so thank you to them.
Thanks, Richard.
Congratulations.
Yes, congrats.
Okay, we'll go on to item nine, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A is police department items, and item one is a two thousand eighteen OWI grant, chief?
Yeah, this is something that we do every year to allow our officers to have dedicated time for OWI enforcement in the village. I think you'll see that in a lot of our reports, we still have a significant issue with OWIs in the village. So, this allows our officers to work that overtime, and then it's reimbursed from the state. So, that's a nice project, nice piece to have.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
We have another set of compliance checks yet this year, too, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Now, item two, summary of major crimes.
Again, I won't go over this in detail, other than to answer, answer questions, but as you can see, we remain pretty busy.
Yeah, again, we appreciate that report. It really helps us, but also the public that is watching online and looks at these things. I think it's good for them to see this, so we appreciate you doing that.
You bet.
Item three is a note from Chief Yule to police department staff regarding evidence room audits. So, Brian, if you want to, and congratulations, by the way, on that.
The two-and-a-half-year project is finally complete. So, I won't go over everything that, that took place, but I want to commend staff, particularly Lieutenant Jenny Pagankov, support services supervisor Rudy Trace, detective sergeant Chad Shop, and the rest of ED for getting this all done. Over ten thousand pieces of evidence were inventoried and audited, not to mention all the cases that, that were affected by, by these issues. So, just a huge, huge accomplishment, so well done to my staff.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looks like a whole new room.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
I didn't get to see, yeah, I didn't get to see the original before.
Yeah, well, you're very lucky.
It was pretty bad.
You probably wouldn't have taken the job.
That's true. It was funny, because Chief Burke sat me down during the process and told me about this. And I was a little taken back by everything that had happened, so it, yeah, it was a little bit jaw-dropping.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure, okay. Again, congratulations on that. We appreciate all the effort of you and everyone else. Item, item B, discussion of possible action is posting for recruitment of account clerk three position. There's a note, Beth Trumpy resigned her position effective September sixth. With the deputy clerk position being held vacant at this point, we need to fill this position. Please note that ten percent of position is charged to the water and sewer budgets respectively. The recommended motion is to authorize recruitment of account clerk three position.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And it's a nice letter from Beth about her years here. We appreciate that. Appreciate all the support.
How long was she here?
About fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
Really?
See, before you do see, can I say something? The motion, we're getting a motion was to approve the closing, the village hall, village hall offices at noon on Fridays. And we, we talked a bit more this, this morning. And at this point, I think we're going to hold off doing that. I, I may, what I may do, ask the board for just a little bit of a revised motion that the only Friday that looks like we may have an issue with staffing, with people being gone, may be September twenty-second.
Okay.
And if we, so if we would close, we would publicize that and, but I, I think I was, I was talking to Lisa and Canyon. I think we, we're going to probably be okay.
Okay. So, do you want a motion tonight?
I, I think if, if you just, maybe give me authority to close if need be, and we'll, we would publicize it. But versus just, just having to close every Friday, I don't think we need to do that.
I'll move that motion.
What is the motion?
Motion to close the village hall on Friday afternoons on the administrator's discretion.
So, it's not just, not just the twenty-second?
It is discretion.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a lot of power.
There could be other Fridays, but right now, that's the one.
It's a lot of power.
Yeah. That's the only thing you're giving me to do, thank you.
Please, I'm sorry. Okay, we got a second.
Oh, no, I was just saying that that's the only day that we see right now that poses an issue, but there could be some later.
And, like, maybe it could be the Friday of October sixth, when we're going to copy the budget, you know. There can be one afternoon, but we're, we're going to try not to do it.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or discussion? So, the motion second to authorize village administrator to close village hall offices at noon on Fridays as needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion possible action around two sixty-four Jefferson Street Water Lateral Repair and Replacement. Recommended motion is the village pay two hundred twenty-one dollars, which is ten percent of two sixty-four Jefferson Street Water Lateral Repair and Replacement.
I'll move that for discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Jeff?
Yes, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Well, I think my, my, my memo kind of explains a little bit of the background of this, and... And, you know, when this came around, this is one of those situations of a very, very old water lateral, very, very brittle, very sensitive. However, that coupled with a contractor that, quite frankly, was not being very careful at times, and I think that's been kind of elaborated on in my memo, just resulted in the need to have this... Every time they kept fixing it, it just kept breaking behind it, behind it. And finally, it was just, you know, has to be replaced all the way up to the house, very similar to what we did with services last year, what people did with services last year on Elm and South Main. Looking at this, you know, we did get the bill from Fox and Sons for about twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred and ten dollars for, that included the Fox and Sons, as well as the plumbing, for the plumber inside the home. I kind of looked at this, and I said, you know, this is one of those situations, and I've worked extensively with the homeowners here, the Ellingers, and they've been very good to work with. And I said, you know, this is kind of one of those situations that, you know, you are responsible for your water lateral. This was going to break at some time and point. Now, would that have been in one year, six months, two years, ten years? Who knows? So I felt that, you know, obviously, the project was, it occurred because the project was ongoing. I think it was made worse by what the contractor did, and so that's why you see kind of a percentage split in there. Before bringing this before you tonight, I confirmed with the homeowners and the contractor, actually, just the contractor stopped in today and signed the original, the one you have in the packet he hadn't signed yet. So the homeowners have signed off on this, the contractor's signed off on this, and I think this is fair. I think I want to try to always feel like we're being fair to our residents, understanding that it's not always an ideal situation. I felt that ten percent from the village was just a good faith effort to say, you know, we're sorry this happened, but, you know, they end up with a brand-new water lateral for approximately, what, fifteen hundred dollars? Was there a split? Yeah, fifteen hundred and forty-seven dollars. So that's much cheaper than what people were having to pay last year.
Okay. I guess I read your memo, and I got to the part where it indicated that the contractor damaged sewer laterals.
Correct.
Nicked phone cables.
Yes.
Collapsed a manhole cone.
Yes.
Causing sewer backups, and cut a fiber optic line. And I guess my question is...
It's been a long summer.
Yeah. Are you going to hire this group anymore?
Well, we should be careful about that.
I can't really say that.
We have state bidding laws, and I think we should... I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
Okay.
I will just say that the bill is like, other communities have to accept a little bid.
Yeah.
Right.
There may be exceptions, but...
Okay. But, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I mean, there's always reason to, I mean, that's why we do ask for prequalifications from contractors.
Right. Okay.
Obviously, this project would go under consideration as part of that prequalification and future projects.
So to finish my thought, is twenty percent enough, given all the damage they've done?
They're paying for a lot of other things.
They have?
They are, and they have, yes.
Okay, so, and the homeowner is good at this point, you indicated?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, so the motion is second to, for the village to pay two hundred twenty-one dollars, which is ten percent of the two sixty-four Jefferson Street Water Lateral Repair and Replacement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Item E, letters in response to villages' inquiries regarding historic preservation tax credit program and dark stores legislation. I'm going to do a quick explanation for those watching, please.
Sure, the historic preservation tax credit, every biannual budget, I think the governor has tried to cut that, and then there are people that lobby to try to get the tax credit put back into the budget. And honestly, I forgot what came out of joint finance. I think they did increase it, but not probably to what people wanted. I say people, I mean communities and developers. And the dark stores, that just has to do with how stores like Target and places like that are being, asking to be assessed versus the way communities want. And the concern is that if those assessments go down, it becomes a burden for other taxpayers. And I know that's still going through the process. I know, I just read something.
Yeah, it's been a paper several times recently.
Did we go through that with Walgreens, is my memory serving me?
It's similar to that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, item F, discussion possible action regarding closing Senior Center on November fourteenth for staff in service. The recommended motion is to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. In service that day, you need to line up people to present and so on, and so we do this every year, I believe.
Yes, we do, once a year, and we try to always make sure and provide meals to our homebound residents, in spite of the fact that the center itself is closed.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item G, Director Public Works Memo to Jefferson Street and North Borough residents.
I thought this was necessary vis-à-vis the previous said memo. And it's been a long summer for everybody, and it's been a long summer for the residents there. And so I wanted to kind of let them know that this is wrapping up, as well as to kind of thank them for their patience. And then, quite honestly, also to encourage people to give a little more courteous driving habits and everything towards construction workers when they're out there. I was appalled when I was out there for a couple afternoons, people driving through very fast, very rude. It's just concerning when, you know, is it really that important to go where you're going, that you would hurt somebody or threaten someone's life? And so I'm hoping that people can kind of take it back a notch and give, you know, especially as the guy's, you know, it's open right now, and they're still going to be out there doing some restoration work, some minor curb replacement and everything, so. Just wanted to ask them to be thinking about that.
Good, thank you. Do you all go down Jefferson Street?
You go like eighty down there right now.
I only got to seventy-five, I got to bridge.
We handed out plenty of certificates, so people know they should be driving on that road.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
That's fast on a bike.
I know, it's got a big motor. Item H, discussion possible action, resolution number seventeen dash thirty-two, requesting exemption from county library tax, and that is a recommended motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Nikki, you want to do our annual explanation on this for the public, please?
This is a step that we go through each year, where we request to be exempted from the county library tax, and the letter in the packet indicates that we are in compliance at this time, and what's the minimum amount that the village would need to spend to have that exemption effective for two thousand and eighteen?
Thank you. Other questions? So the motion is second to approve resolution number seventeen dash thirty-two, requesting exemption from county library tax. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I, discussion possible action regarding discussion about the bankruptcy write-off of past due municipal services bill for account number six point zero four zero 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 point zero two, in amount of three hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents. And again, that is a recommended motion, so.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions here? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J, thank you to Megan Lasowski and Saint John Lutheran Church for work at Gaston Memorial Park. And we appreciate that. There's a number of pictures in our packet, which the public can also see at the present time, so if others are interested in those types of projects in parks, I'm sure Jeff could make that happen. It sounds like we had considerable help from the Public Works Department in delivering things they needed also, so thanks to them, too.
Well, thanks, Jeff, for working with this group. I think it's wonderful when volunteer groups do things like work in the parks.
Right.
Because, you know, as you've heard tonight, Jeff's department is shorthanded, and this helps him manage his staffing a lot better when they get...
And I drive by this park a couple times a day, and I can honestly say, since it's been cleaned up and with the new sand and everything, there's kids down there all the time playing in it and stuff like that. So it's neat to see, you know, people as they gravitate back towards the park when it gets fixed up and looking nice.
Good. Okay, item K, discussion possible action, addendum to contract number eight-three-seven-zero-zero, Dane County. And the recommended motion is to approve the addendum to contract number eight-three-seven-hundred with Dane County for senior center meal served at Ziggy's.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Rachel, if you want to just explain quickly, please, for people who are watching.
If you have the feeling of deja vu right now, you should, because this came before you back in, I think, June or very early July. The county wants to increase the amount of money that is available to reimburse Ziggy's for meals. Donations that the seniors make help offset the cost, but still, there's a cost involved. They want to increase the amount of money we have by five thousand dollars. We, you guys voted to enact that agreement or have that sent back signed, and unfortunately, the county's attorneys looked at it and said, you know, you guys should have brought it to us the first time. The county didn't have the language quite in a way that the county corporate council wanted it to be. So they voided those documents and sent them back with slightly different language this time. So it's the same thing we did before.
Okay, thank you. And that program is quite popular, right?
That program is very popular.
Yeah, that's what I thought, good. So any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item L, DOT project updates. Is this you again, Jeff?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to give a little update. You know, there are a few projects on the horizon. There's the County Highway MM interchange. There's a proposed salt shed and park and ride lot that would be up on the southwest quadrant of the intersection there, kind of where those old sheds are right now, as you're heading out of town on MM. And that, you know, is tentatively planned for two thousand and twenty-one, although a park and ride lot has been proposed for many, many years, you know, with the village. So depending on funding and everything, and the budget and everything, where that could end up, but just kind of an FYI. And then US fourteen, they're talking about bridge deck replacements at several bridges, McCoy, and all the way up to, kind of at Burn Road, what's the other one over there, as you head north? And then Cable Guard is the protecting, that's to keep people from going from, say, a northbound lane over to the southbound lane. You see them out on one fifty-one, kind of as a safety improvement. I just bring these to your attention, because as far as interruption, it's the US fourteen work that could cause a significant interruption at that time, because they were talking about wanting to use the off-ramps and roundabouts as the detour routes for that, as they go to the bridge at one thirty-eight, which would actually then completely close one thirty-eight for a period of time. So we want to make sure that we're not trying to do a county project at the same time where we would have, say, Janesville Street closed, or Main Street closed, or something like that. So we're just, I just want to keep these on your radar of kind of upcoming DOT projects. You know how they go, they could slip out years, and they could become a higher priority all of a sudden, too, so.
Thank you.
Would they perhaps include a bus stop in the park and ride?
That's, yeah, that has actually been discussed, yes. There's a bus drop-off lane for the park and ride lot.
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, item T, I'm reporting committees, there are none. Item eleven, minister not requiring action, there are none. Item twelve, unfinished business, there's none. New business. Item A, excuse me, approval of pending new operator licenses approved by the police department at QuickTrip number seven thirty-one, with Marissa Atkins, Adam Larson, and Zachary Peters.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Takes us down to item fourteen, future agenda items. There's our list there. Item fifteen, the board will meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight-five-one C, to consider performance evaluation data of a village employee, and pursuant to nineteen point eight-five-one E, to consider possible acquisition of property in TIF number four.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Steen?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Adro?
Yes.
Thank you, and we will adjourn from closed session. We'll stay in this room. And away we go.